Mrs. Janelle Scandberry-Monzie. These are the ones that are here with us this evening. But we also have other members of the Commission. There are Mr. Jerune Wood, Dr. Jonathan Lashley, Dr. Murphy, Dr. Yolanda Allen. And we also have a number of other persons who would be in one way or the other involved with the process from the Ministry of the Economic Affairs. We would have Waynel Savery. We also want to make mention of Mr. Delano Scandberry, formerly of the Ministry of the Economic Affairs, who was part of the initial, in the beginning with the Commission. We also like to recognize other persons from the Ministry of Economic Affairs. That is Mr. Patrick Makaski, Director of Economic Affairs and Investment. And we want to welcome here this evening the Permanent Secretary in the Economic Affairs Division of the Ministry of Finance and Economic Affairs. I want to say a special welcome to those online and those who are here this evening. We want to say thank you to those who have been supporting us and facilitating these meetings, those from G I S, and those who have been providing the audio video feed for those who are online. We want to encourage you to make your comments, ask your questions, so that we can finalize the population policy in terms of getting it to government, because government will then have to go through the process of preparing it for cabinet and then having it ratified and so. So we want to thank you. And at this time, we're going to invite the Chair of the Commission, Ms. Roberta Clark, to give you an overview of where we are so far, how we got here, and where we're proposing to go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ford, and good afternoon to everyone who's here in the St. Michael School Auditorium. And also thanks and welcome to those of you who are online. I want to also add on to what Mr. Ford said on behalf of the Commission to welcome you all. So this is the third, this is the third in a series of public consultations, but we've also had thematic consultations in 2022. And these consultations for the Commission are quite important because they give us an opportunity to share with you our analysis as well as our recommendations and to hear from you based on your diverse experiences and expertise and interests, what you think about what we're recommending, but also, more importantly, what do you wish us to consider further in the policy documents? So just to say welcome once again. I'm supposed to be doing the PowerPoint. I want to say just quickly about the Commission. The Commission is an independent commission. It's a non-partisan commission and is comprised of people with expertise in a range of areas from human rights to physical planning, environmental management, public health, law, public policy, demographics, cultural development, and I think I said environmental management already. So it's a commission based with quite a lot of expertise across a range of disciplines. And I think that if you look at the report, you will see those perspectives from the various disciplines reflected. Okay, so the Population Commission was established in January 2019, and it was a task-bound commission. The Commission was asked to do two things in the main. One, to prepare a situational analysis that analyzes the causes and some of the consequences of the trends in population size and age structure. And we did that mostly based on reviewing birth, death, and migration rates since 1960. And of course, we had census data since 1960. So the situation analysis also, through the situation analysis, looking at the trends in size and structure, we were also asked to make projections on what the population barbedness would look like size-wise and age-structure-wise if nothing was done to intervene or address what we saw looking at the trends in birth, death, and migration rates. So that's the first task, and that task was completed in 2020. And the second task was to develop a draft or to draft a population policy for the government's consideration and a policy that identified a set of population-related goals and interventions to address any population-related challenges or impediments to achieving the state's or the country's long-term economic, social, and environmental objectives. So that's the two tasks. And we did, we completed the draft policy in November 2021. And so since then, we've had, as I said before, a series of thematic consultations. And this is a round of public consultations. Okay, I just want to go very, very quickly through the, what we found in our analysis, that Barbados has had very controlled population growth in the post-independence period. So the population has only grown by 24% since 1960. Really important, that we've had consistent declines in fertility and birth rates. And in fact, the fertility rate fell below 2.1 children per woman back in 1980. And that 2.1 children per woman is not a magical figure, but it is, in the world of demography, a figure which helps us understand how a population can regenerate itself from one generation to the next. So we did find consistent drops, reductions in fertility rates since 1960. Also, decrease in death rates as a result of improvements in health outcomes, and of course, therefore, increased longevity of life. We found decline in percentage of persons of working age, and that is defined, Janelle, as persons between 15 and 64 in the demographic world. But of course, we understand that for us, practically speaking, in 2021, people don't really leave school until 18. So some adjustment will have to be made, but still decline in percentages of persons of working age, a growth in the proportion of persons over 65 in the population, and therefore, higher dependency ratios. So it is estimated at some point in time by 2040, for every two persons of dependent age, so persons over 65 and persons under 15, you'll have one person of working age. And that, you know, I think everybody will understand that that is a problem or certainly a challenge that has to be addressed. But these are just some graphs that show this. But this is an interesting graph. So this graph shows for six countries in the Caribbean, the fertility rates are, you see in every country, that downward trend in fertility rates is evident. And for most of the countries in this chart, except for the blue line, and the blue line is Haiti, for most of these, all of the other countries on this chart, the fertility rates are hovering around two or below two, two children per woman at the end of reproductive years. And so this is the outcome. What we will see, we think by, based on the trends in birth rates and death rates and migration rates, what we'll see is the population is going to keep on growing very slightly until about 2030. It's going to stabilize a bit. And then by 2040, you see the population size is going to decrease. So that's a decline in population. That's a projection of the Commission. So two things here, that the population size is going to eventually decrease if there's nothing done, but also that the proportion of persons over 65 is going to increase, which is based on the decline in birth rates as well as, yeah, basically declining birth rates and better health outcomes, people live longer. And this is just at a glance. When we talk about population structure, we're talking about the male-female composition of the population as well as the age groups. And the blue and red chart, that's 2010 census. And the 2021 census has been completed. And I think, Janelle, we should get some results shortly or sometime this year, hopefully, for the 2021 census. Okay, so the next two graphs here are projections, 2040 and 2050. And you will see increasingly, the persons of older ages are going to be the largest sector of the population. And that will be even more extreme by the time you get to 2050. And what does that mean, practically speaking? So if you have persons, fewer persons in the working age, then you have fewer persons to be involved in the labor force and in the economy. You will, you expect therefore that government raises revenue generally from income tax and consumption tax, and that will be affected. But also, increasing numbers of persons over 65 also will result in an increase in demand on Social Security and also on Social Protection, because there are quite a lot of people in the informal economy, persons who may not have contributed to pension schemes but are entitled to non-contributory pensions when they turn, is it 67? So there will be increased demand on the Social Security system. And I think that there's been quite a lot of discussion recently on that in Barbados. The other, I think, pretty alarming statistic that we found when we were doing the analysis is the first bullet there, that the number of young people in the labor force has declined by almost 50% between 1995 and 2017. So fewer people, fewer young people, fewer youth in the labor force. What does that mean? That must affect productivity, must affect innovation, it must affect creativity, it must affect dynamism. You know, so it's kind of just the culture of the country will have a shift with decreasing numbers of youth in the, in community, in community work, in community development, as well as in the labor force and as people who give care to other people in the society. So that's interesting and, I think, alarming statistic. The other thing we found, notwithstanding declining numbers of young people in the labor force, a lot, quite a significant percent of those young people are not in employment, they're not in education, they're not in training. And that percent back in 2017 was 18%. Since 2017, of course, we've had the COVID years, the shutdown of the, of the big sectors of the economy. And we can imagine that it would have been a rise in unemployment and underemployment, even as right now the economy is recovering. But this would have had an impact on youth unemployment. So that's sort of maybe the main things there. So what we wanted to do was outline a population policy that contains strategies that would increase the likelihood that this country continues to have or ensures that this country maintains a population size and a balanced age structure to achieve its goals. And for us, these goals, of course, are social justice, fair opportunities in the labor force, opportunities to be in entrepreneurship, social protection for the vulnerable population, all of the things that we, that we hold dear in the democratic state that we're in, the social democratic state that we live in, that the state will have, will continue to have the resources to fund universal free education, universal free healthcare. We'll be able to fund non-contributory pensions and social welfare provision and that you have a population where the state can continue to contribute, to support those who need the support and also just to create that enabling environment for development and importantly, addressing inequalities and reducing poverty. So here, what we really want to stress as we go into the policies, that a population policy is a plan and tool, and it's a plan and tool for the future. And when the government commissioned this commission, they were thinking about the future. They were saying, let us, when they asked us about the projections, they want to know if we leave things as they are, what will the country's population look like in 20 years, in 30 years? And what can we do now or start to do now that will mitigate those developments? Not only mitigate, but respond directly to those developments. So importantly, the policy is part of planning for the future. So I just want to maybe say, in relation to this specific policy, this is our large objective, that the population policy should contribute to promoting sustainable and inclusive development, a good quality of life, and that's really important, for Barbadians and residents without compromising environmental sustainability and the ability of future generations to meet their needs. I think the operative four words here is, are good quality of life. Well, now, let's call it six or seven words, good quality of life for Barbadians and residents. And to do and to have a good quality of life, the state has to be strong. The labor force has to be well-equipped. The population has to be healthy. And in all of those, we have to have good infrastructure. We have to have availability of water. Natural resources have to be well-managed, all of those. And we must have clean green spaces. All of that is part of the good quality of life. We must have social solidarity, we must have cultural development. And all of that we contribute to, but the state is also very important as an enabler of that good quality of life for Barbadians. And so now I would like to maybe turn over to my colleagues as we look at the three policy goals that are contained in this draft population policy. And the first one is about promoting the maintenance of a population size to sustain adequate levels of social care, productivity, labor force participation for this inclusive development. And Janelle, can I ask you to take us through that?
Hi, good evening, everybody. So the first goal, sub-goal 1.1, develop and implement a pro-growth migration policy. And from our perspective, then we would have spoken to our stakeholders because we did not develop this policy on our own. It was extensive consideration among a wide perspective of persons in our community. So one of the recommendations under this sub-goal is to extend the categories of persons entitled to citizenship and permanent residence. So if you have a grandparent, their grandchildren could be, we can extend citizenship right down to their grandchildren as opposed to just possibly just the children. We are recommended a managed migration approach of persons who can bring capabilities and resources to invest in the future of Barbados and to contribute in areas of the economy where there's unmet need. So the managed migration approach is really critical because we don't want to have a case where we have a flood of persons into the country with or without skills at any age range. If we go that approach, then we will not meet the needs of the country. So what is important is that we be careful of the types of persons that we attract into our country, Barbados. And we are saying primarily, in the first instance, it should be persons who have skills that we necessarily don't have here within the country in the first instance. One other recommendation, retaining and repatriating Barbadians who are abroad, who, how, what are the factors that may encourage them to come back to Barbados and to contribute to our society? Sub-goal 1.2, enhance family well-being to support reproductive decision-making. And what we are saying here, we are not saying to persons, we are not saying that men or women should go and have children. The persons who want to, we are saying that provide the, if there are issues surrounding fertility in terms of funding, et cetera, make provision for persons like those who want to have children. So as we have here, family policy to support fertility decisions, social protection, social service provision, because you would need to support those persons who have an elderly parent and also looking after small children who are met in the middle, who may be having challenges in that area. We're also looking at gender equality and shared care. Traditionally, women would take the greater burden when it comes to sharing the care in the household. We're looking at social norm changes, labor force measures, and access to, greater access to health services for persons, for persons in our society.
Thank you, Janelle. So that is policy goal one, and we have three policy goals. The second one is to provide, so we're talking about, the first policy goal is responding to the projections of a declining and aging population. And so the recommendations that we make are medium and long-term. Certainly, supportive reproductive decision-making is a long-term, will have, is a long-term strategy. But if we have labor force needs now, what we are suggesting is a development of a managed migration policy that can be implemented more in the short term and closely monitored. So that's on the population size part. But as I said earlier, we also found there were quite a lot of implications of this aging and declining population as well as the finding of the underparticipation of some young people in the labor force. So in policy goal two, we think, we really recommend it quite strongly that we have to provide Barbadians and persons who are here, non-national Barbadians, now and in the future with opportunities for personal development. And that's all we are saying, let us respond to those vulnerabilities in our population. So that, first, we have four sub-goals here, promoting and strengthening what we call the care economy. If you have young children, if you have sick, if you have the elderly, and particularly where the elderly, where there's a high, maybe higher, higher rate of illness, which is associated with aging, but also with non-controllable diseases, which is quite an issue here, as well as all across the Caribbean, how do you support the care economy? So that's one. But also facilitating intergenerational care and exchange in families and communities. You have an aging population, but we don't want to be isolated. So how do you make sure that you have an intergenerational approach to care? I see your hand, and I'll come to you. Let me finish, and I'll come to you. Okay, the third sub-goal is expanding access to quality healthcare and wellness services. Again, what we're advocating is a healthy aging, well, health across the lifecycle, but certainly, given the aging population, approach to supporting people to age healthily with access to quality healthcare and wellness. And the fourth one, which is responding to the question of the labor force, how do we improve the capacity and proficiency of the labor force so that they can have access to expanded opportunities? So that's really about responding to some of the population-related implications of this aging and declining population that we spoke about. One second. And finally, goal, policy goal three, which is about promoting integrated settlement development. What we've observed is that there has been a population redistribution from the coastal areas into other parts of Barbados, and that also meant an incursion into the use of agricultural land. So the population policy suggests, and as we think about where we live in Barbados and where the physical, your physical planning has to ensure that we have a land use and a land use pattern that preserves green spaces, preserves agricultural land, as well as allows for housing as well as infrastructural development. And we also speak about the efficient management of natural resources for that. That's a lot to do with water and land. And then thirdly, to strengthen the resilience to the impacts of climate change. So that's the population policy at a glance. We have some cross-cutting themes. We think it's going to be very difficult to achieve one, two, or three policy goals without some rethinking of the education system. And we've heard a lot about that from, in the consultations. People are really, really concerned about the education sector that fails or does not allow those who are going through it, young people to come out with, at their best. So that we talk about a reform or strengthening of the education system that takes us away from a preoccupation with testing and certification to one where we strengthen emotional intelligence and capabilities, capabilities, self-confidence, self-esteem. Of course, given the care responsibilities, we know that's traditionally associated with women. So we make some recommendations for equitable sharing of the burden of care between women and men, but also between families and the state. And then another cross-cutting theme is how do we manage our environment well and take care of it for those living now as well as for future generations? So that's it in a nutshell. I don't apologize if anything, Waynel, you all want to emphasize? Mr. Rutter? Is there anything you want to emphasize before we turn over to the audience?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair of the Commission. In terms of the protocols, we have a mic in the aisle here. What we're going to encourage you to do is to come to the mic, say who you are, if you represent a particular organization. You can give the name of that organization. If you're giving comments, try to be precise, don't ramble too much. And then we will appreciate if you make a suggestion or a question at the end of your comments. Okay, so go right ahead. You might be flipping between the audience who are here and the ones who are online standing in questions. Some questions might have been from yesterday that we didn't get an answer. But you have the chances evening to start off the discussions or the comments. Go right ahead and say who your name, who you are.
Right, so good evening, my name is Justin. I have two questions. You know of the estates in Boarded Hall? I was told that those are for the older persons. I was wondering if there's any plans of having older homes around Barbados? And secondly, if there is a program where persons not necessarily go out into the communities, but rather, let me say, to community centers, someplace central, where you can provide healthcare for the older generations?
So maybe you want to turn that into a recommendation for us? You're recommending something.
Right, I would like to think that with a change in the population, dynamics in terms of the proportions in the younger age groups versus those in the older age groups. Right now, we may have a number of day nurseries. And I anticipate going forward, you might have to have a lot more institutions catering to older persons. There might be daycare, there might be longer term. Right now, we have longer term, but most of them are private homes. I suspect going forward, we might have, because the so-called houses or district hospitals right now are full because everybody, you know, looking someplace to have their older parents and so. And it's expensive sometimes to look after older parents. So I suspect that going forward, as the population moves into the older age groups, some persons, because during their working lives, they would have built up some assets, and they might be able to live at home with some kind of care. So a whole range of options will have to be made available for persons in the older age group. But I'm sure that the relevant agencies will look at that. You want to make a?
Right, I just wanted to say that we have made note of that need, that there will be a need going forward. And so one of the recommendations certainly has been to develop and encourage those types of spaces that you've been, that you just asked about. So those safe social spaces at the community level where we can be responsive to the needs of specific populations. So not only the elderly, as you were asking about, but also persons with disabilities and so on, and facilitating intergenerational communities, well, certainly within the communities. So we have made that recommendation, but it's good to hear from you and to know that that's also why you're mine. As Roberta said, we can take your recommendation, your question, and take it as a recommendation, sir Henry.
Okay, thank you. We have another person by the mic. Say, again, say your name if you represent our organization.
Hello, good evening. My name is Carolyn Edmonds. I'm just, let's go from Bay of Bill, where you call the Bay of Land. Well, I want to say I highly commend this committee and all of y'all that are working with it. Y'all are doing an excellent job. It's, when I first hear these advertisements constantly coming over and saying the area, well, I said, well, I wasn't even sure of the topic, but I just know St. Michael's School closed walking distance. So I said, well, I know for sure it's going to be something important. So for sure, I'll be here. And I'm really glad to hear y'all speaking about a better way of life for the citizens of this country. That speaks of a good government, good governance, good government, government, govern, taking about the citizens of this country. And that is highly commendable. As I was, before I heard y'all speak about the elderly, I was thinking about what is in the pipeline for those older elderly people that, from the Jurassic Hospital that is just next door to me? For years, I For years, I, I live next to these people, so I highly, I, I care about them. Over the other day, I see a fire engine, and I'm making my business to run to eventually, um, be sure, constantly I see any fire engine going there, I'm always thinking about those elderly, so I'm very happy to hear about that, that, um, that what is in the pipeline, the plans to have that four hundred, hundred bed built, that new home for the citizens of this coun- citizens of this country, after they have worked so hard and made a valuable contribution. It is the gov- the business of the government and the people of this country who are responsible of this, of the citizens of this country, to make sure that these people are properly taken care of. So I, I welcome that suggestion, I'm so, I welcome everything y'all doing, y'all doing the excellent job. Cheers up, hats off to y'all, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. All right, we have somebody else, again, say your name.
Good evening. I am just a private citizen, I don't represent any particular organization. I am here out of curi- not necessarily curiosity, um, I have a few questions, and I guess I will do them piece by piece, give everybody else a chance to make a contribution or to ask a question. Based on the fact that the last, as far as I understand, the last census was actually covered, um, conducted, it started, but it had to be stopped. So my question is, the projections or the, the figures that are being quoted, the numbers that are being used, are they actual cold, hard figures? Or is it a case that these are projections and suppositions in terms of what you think could be happening in the coming years?
So the 2021 population housing census, there was a pause, but we were able to complete the census, the last one. I'm not sure if you were referring to the 2010 census or the current one that just finished?
So as it stands now, according to your last census conducted, what is Barbados' population?
Right, we, so we came off the field, um, last year, and we are in the process of, um, collecting, collating, sorry, and putting together a report to be submitted to our ministry shortly, so it's not published as yet. So we're not in a position to say at this moment.
Okay, so the policy that we're discussing is based on data that is not yet, pardon?
From the 2010 population of housing census, as well as, um, figures from the UN projections.
Figures from the UN what?
Projections, and our vital statistics, which is births, deaths.
Okay, so would it be correct for me to say that this policy that we're discussing is, so in light of the fact that the, the, the figures that we're dealing with are not necessarily, I wouldn't want to say grounded in actual fact, but they're not necessarily cold, hard figures?
When you say cold, hard, what do you mean?
As in, that, you could say, okay, Barbados' population is, I don't know, 300,000. So we know, okay, based on that, there has been a definitive, there has been a definitive rise or drop of what, a what, a what?
So over, so over the decade, we do population estimates, um, coming right up to the next census. So shortly we'll be able to say, as of 2021, what our current population size will be. It's just that we aren't in a position to say so right now, because it isn't published as yet.
Okay, um, would you be in a position to give some sort of indication as to how soon that information would be available to the public?
Um, I can't, I don't have a date I can give you.
No, I'm not asking a date, just a ballpark figure, end of the year, middle of the month.
No, not, no, but shortly on a year, probably within the next quarter, before the next, well, next quarter, which is shortly.
Okay, all right, I will yield at the moment and let somebody else, but I do have two or three other questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is, my name is Roy Turney, and, um, I was having a look at your sheet where it talks about that our population is declining, is that right? And you want to know what you can do to make sure the population of Barbados doesn't decline? That's what's going on here. Well, first of all, you don't pay enough wages, there's women on the, on the border sitting down, and you know, none of yous want to be pregnant. And the reason why yous don't want to be pregnant is because you've got, you haven't got the finance to look after children. Whereas the model of other countries that you are trying to follow, because Barbados is not a leading country, uh, Barbadians don't lead, Barbadians follow. And I know that you do follow, because I've been here for, uh, a number of years, and I've seen you look at your children and say, this, want to speak properly? So in your mind, you feel that there's somebody more than you while you chastising your children for not speaking the Queen's English. Now, you can hear that I speak English, I was actually educated in England, but once we left the classroom, the, the children who are born of Christian parents in England, when they leave the classroom, they speak English Christian. I speak English Belgian, because we don't mimic, um, the English people when you're born in England, you understand what I'm saying to you? Because when you're born in England, because of racism, you're not trying to mimic the bus all the time, whereas in your society, the society that you live in, you try to mimic the bus all the time. And what we got to realize here is, we're our own country, we don't have to follow the narrative. I heard, I, I watched the Prime Minister speak the other day on the, about the budget, and the Prime Minister mentioned all the good things, all the good things that she wanted the electorate to remember her by, but I never heard the Prime Minister say, yeah, in none of those budget speeches, that she put $45 on each household. Now, you imagine a single woman, well, not even a, a woman with three children, and you put $45 a month on water before she turns the tap? Do you think she wants any children? So you don't really want to populate the island. I, I personally think this is probably another, um, uh, International Monetary Fund, or World Economic Forum, or WHE thing, that once again, Barbados is following? Because if the Prime Minister had her own way, all of us would have been vaccinated if we didn't have a war to say that we didn't want it mandatory? Do you understand what I'm saying to you? We all know now, by following the narrative, which Barbados is doing very well, yeah, because I know that you mimic the English language to such a degree, that the other day I was watching the news, and I saw the Minister say that the pedagogical situation in Barbados was fantastic. Now, I was born in the UK, and I had to look up that word, I had to look up that word, pedagogical? Because you think that by using these terms, that that makes you more clever, but us, who come out to international countries and see black people mimicking, mimicking, um, people that don't even like us, I was born there, yeah? So when you bring in these new measures, because the measures don't make sense, all you have to do is give the women more family allowance, so that they can have more children, and then your population will grow. When you're starving the population, how do you expect them to want children? In fact, right now in this country, and in, uh, in fact, all over the world, most black women don't want any children. They decide, you know, because the plan is this, because we're mimicking, because we're always mimicking, um, uh, massa, for lack of a better word, this is what happens to us. We go and get a degree, and because we're pursuing the degree, we don't have no children until we're, until we're old, yeah? And when you pursue the degree and you think that that's going to make you, it's not going to make you. What's going to happen to you is, you're working nine till five till you're 65, and you're adding wealth to somebody else's product. And I think that it's about time, uh, Barbados with its political system, stop voting B and D and vote E. Vote E for a change, because what you're following, what you're following, that you think that is going to make our country great, it only degrades our country, because right now, we're known as the first gay republic. Now, you probably don't know that, because you've always lived in Barbados, but if you travel around the world, if you travel around the world, that's what Barbados is known for? Because watch it, the other day, a girl now, a girl's going out there, she has her boyfriend, she meets a guy out in a club, they're going back to the girl's house, the girl doesn't mind consensual sexual relationship, but then the guy turns around, and he decides, he decides, yeah, to sleep with her in her backside, but she can't now go and make a complaint, because look what our government's done, they've made that legal, they would have given us all the vaccine, do you understand what I'm saying to you? So all of this that you got talking, you better start thinking about freedom for yourself and freedom for your family. And while I'm here, I noticed that every time I come to these town hall meetings, a guy called Fred Corbin comes, and every time Fred opens his mouth, Fred comes with facts. Why doesn't anyone debate Fred Corbin and stop him from speaking? Do you understand, he was offered, just the other day, on Two Four Six Beijing Vibes, it's a radio station in the United Kingdom, yeah? He, he asked, yeah? Fred Corbin and the presenter of that show came to the Attorney General and asked them, yeah, let's, let's have a talk about what's going on in Barbados, and no one wants to deal with Fred Corbin, why? Why? Because, uh, as I said, I heard the budget, I heard the budget, and I know I'm paying $45 a month before I turn on my tap, but then when you look at it, the bill that, that was for sewage waste, why am I paying $45 for sewage waste?
Right, sir, I don't really want to interrupt you, but I think I, we, we take your point, which generally is, that in terms of population, that the reason why women are not having children, because it's too expensive.
They can't afford it.
Right, so I think that is your general point, but, um, but this particular commission, as you said, has a specific role, and the, 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 the one about women, um, not having children and so fits in, but then you're drifting into some areas.
Well, I'll stick to the point.
So Mr. Fu, I can, I can address that if, if you'd like.
Okay.
Um, so, so that's a, thank you for your contribution. Um, that is certainly something that we've been hearing throughout our consultations quite a bit, about the cost and how expensive it is, obviously, to have children. And it's so something that we do appreciate, and, and so, so under sub-goal, uh, one point two, we've made a recommendation around this issue, and around providing more social protection.
Listen, listen.
So, so I've, I've listened to you speak, sir, and I just want to just address what you've said, um, and as, as you may know, there's some other people who want to have a turn. So let me just, let me just address what you've said first. Um, so, so some of the things that we've made recommendations on, uh, these include child benefit subsidies, especially for low-income, single parents, subsidies, housing for low-income, single-parent households, uh, we've talked about ensuring high quality and, and well-accessible, which is important, based on what you've said, public childcare, especially for children under three. Um, and, and these are just some of them. So also providing community counseling centers to support parents, and so there's quite a few measures in the policy. If you also have the executive summary, you can have a, you can have a read, sir, because we feel that this helps to address some of the, some of the things that you're speaking about in terms of the cost. So we do hear what you're seeing in terms of how expensive it can be, and you've spoken about water and so on, and these are some of the measures that we have recommended to try to help with that, to encourage those who do want to have children in this society, to, to help them feel that they're facilitated and supporting and wanting to do so. So thank you for your contribution, I hope that you've heard what I've said, and I hope that helps to, to, for you to see that we've, we've, we've heard that and reflected it, and sought to address it within the policy.
Well, what I would like to say is, well done is always better than well said, and I've been to a lot of these meetings, and I've heard a lot of these well-put-together, um, English, uh, uh, eloquency, and it doesn't count for nothing, because at the end of the day, look, the reality is, if you, if you're really honest, and, and I want to just diversify it, our island, yeah? It's a slave island, our island has become, this is what's happened to our island, our island, massa has been building plantation houses all over Barbados now, and you know what they're called now? He doesn't call them plantation houses, you know what he calls them now? Hotels, and you know who's going to be cleaning the toilet? So we need to stop following the world and try and take hold of our own country for the benefit of ourselves, that's what we need to be doing. So all the talk, as I said, I mean, you probably, you on the panel, you probably haven't even got two children yourself, because you gave up your career, you gave up your, um, your, your opportunity to have children for a career, that's what most of you has done, and not only that, yeah? Also, we need child support, we want, we need free, uh, child support when we take our children to school, because watch it, you're going to get your children, and because you're not free and you have to work for someone, the nursery school teacher brings up your children, yeah? The teacher brings up your children, because you don't have no impact on your children, because you're at work.
Okay, sir, thank you very much for your contribution, uh, we just, we really want to get some others in, so thank you so much. Mr. Fu, over to you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your contribution, but as, um, the, the Commissioner said, that we want to give others a chance, if maybe later on you have another question or another suggestion, uh, we would give you the opportunity. So we have a young lady here who was here quite early.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Camille, and I wanted to add another perspective to the discussion. The summary says that the fertility rates have dipped below replacement since 1980, and as we know, the Termination of Pregnancy Act would have been passed in 1983, and I want to suggest that we acknowledge that abortion probably has something to do with the, the, um, decline in the population. The Gomata Institute, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly, is, was a research arm of Planned Parenthood, but it is a leading research and policy organization, and they have stated that between the years 2015 and 2019, there were approximately 7,000 pregnancies in Barbados, 3,000 of which ended in abortion. Now, what I want to say, which is not about, about the decriminalization of abortion, but rather, a, um, running organization called Unborn Justice, we provide support to women with crisis pregnancies, and what we found is that many women who have an unintended pregnancy feel pressured to abort because of circumstances, and not because they want to. And in the services that we're able to provide to our clients, we're able to, women end up not terminating their pregnancies, and we, we focus a lot on education and empowerment, along with our tangible support and psychological support. So my suggestion is that in our, in one of our solutions, and I know that there is the social protection part of it, but that Unborn Justice, as the only pregnancy resource center in Barbados, that we are considered as an organization that, that persons can be referred to. The Termination of Pregnancy Act states that before a termination, a woman is counseled, and she is supposed to receive information about alternatives before she makes that final decision. And I would like to suggest that Unborn Justice is mentioned in those services that are offered to her, um, that she's, that she, that is made known to her before she makes her final decision. One other suggestion is, we've had clients who considered adoption, but did not, because as we know, in Barbados, we only do closed adoptions, and in other places in the world, maybe for the last 50 years, they have moved forward from closed adoptions because of, you know, the, the cons of, of closed adoption. And I would love, I pray that before I die, that I see a Barbados where we can have other options for adoption, where, you know, women can meet the parents of the, the baby, because there are, there are mothers who may not necessarily want a parent, but, and they are, we know that, I, I went to a, a town hall meeting with the childcare board of parents there that are on the waiting list, wanting to adopt babies, so there are persons who would choose adoption, and there are persons who want to adopt. So I think that if the childcare, if adoption can be, or even if we can be more educated about, about adoption, I think that that would, um, more person, we would have maybe more of those 3,000, 3,000 babies that are terminated annually.
Okay, thank you very much for your suggestion. Any of the questions want to comment on that, or you'll take that, um, anybody want to comment on that, although it's quite comprehensive?
Yeah, thank you very much, Camille, for that thoughtful, um, intervention. And to say that, I think, and I put the slide back up, because this, this population policy is very conscious that we must, um, be consistent with our constitutional fundamental rights and freedoms, as well as international human rights law. So we have a commitment of fairness, equality, non-discrimination, social justice, but also to respecting people's autonomy to make decisions in their own life. So in relation to fertility, what we're saying is that the state and community should support So in relation to fertility, what we're saying is that the state and community should support those who wish to make reproductive decisions towards childbearing. And we could do that in a number of ways. And Wayne has already expressed some of that. But the social protections, extensive social services. And I very much like what you've suggested, which is first to think a little bit more about the adoption and probably foster care system that's in place. But the point is to 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 help or support people make a decision that they feel comfortable to make. But we very much do believe in women's autonomous right to control the number and spacing of their children. But I I I take everything you've said about creating that environment where people are not stigmatized for the decisions that they make about about um about having children or not having children equally. So to just say, um, so we're talking about support to fertility decisions, which would include the fiscal or the financial um factors that we spoke about. So we know people don't have, wait a minute. We notice that people don't have children for financial reasons, for social reasons, because they may not have the caring network around them, including the sharing of the care between men and women, fathers and mothers and parents, and also that they may have fertility issues. We heard quite a lot about that in our consultations, that there are women and men who want to have children, um but may have fertility issues and can't afford fertility treatments. So we also make recommendations about that. But I would like you, Camille, because what you have is the summary. Um, so there's the policies online, so you can maybe have a go have a look at it. And if there's some things that you want to comment more on and suggestions you want to make, we really would welcome hearing from you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, you've got a chance to give another question. Go ahead, and then the gentleman can come back.
All right, I have two questions. In light of the fact that you're speaking to, I'm involved in education. So with regards to wanting more children, that means that you're going to need these children to be educated. The education system right now is not necessarily where it's supposed to be. If you speak to any parent, they will tell you that. In terms of children leaving a system, not necessarily being as functionally literate and numerate as they would need to be in terms of what an employer would want from his or her workforce. Outside of that, over the years, if you were to ask anybody who has done the Common Entrance exam or eleven plus exam, they will tell you that the skills that are being tested every with every successive exam seem to be whittled down and watered down significantly. So my question is, in like, oh, and also, let's not forget that you, if you have an increased population, you're going to need health care for that population. We hear horror stories all of the time, voice notes, um, people ranting on Facebook, et cetera, about instances where they have felt that they have been failed by the existing health care system that we have. This is, I understand, a policy that is to come on stream. How exactly would this policy seek to finance? Because at the end of the day, money makes the world go round. How would these needs and the increased pressure on these just, and these are just two of the services that would need to be looked into? Let's not even look at roads. Let's not even look at taxes. Let's not even look, oh, and I I noted that too, that if you have new services, then that means we already we're going to have taxes. I think Barbadians are already crying under the burden of taxes, taxes, and more taxes. So it looks like this is going to increase the taxes. How exactly um would this policy? Or is there anything within the policy as it concrete in terms of how was the plan to actually finance this?
Thank you very much for those questions. Um, I I'm not quite sure what you're saying about education, but I get the impression you're saying the system is not working for many.
It's not.
Okay, I think we would agree with you.
Pardon?
We would all agree with you. I think, you know, that was a very consistent refrain in all of the consultations. No one is satisfied. We inherited uh from colonial times an education system, which we have not changed. We went from O levels to C C sec. And we went from A levels to Cape. But the real, the 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 architecture really has not changed. We still have common entrance. So I think that Barbados is, there has, there's an intention to phase that out. Um, but we're still engaging certification as opposed to perhaps another kind of of education that would really allow us to release at a very early stage all of that capacity for learning, rather than closing us down. So we make some recommendations, but this is not, this is a population policy. There's not, it's not a national development policy. It's not an education sector policy. So we are making recommendations like a cross cutting theme that to get to a better labor force participation at a higher quality, to get to better health systems, better wellness, all of those things require that there's an education component in all of that. Um, so it's a cross cutting recommendation, but we are not deeply into identifying what has to be done in the education sector for reform. That's not part of our remit.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, essentially, you're looking at how best to go about increasing the population when there are already existing issues, but then you're not sure how the increased population would necessarily impinge on or impact the already struggling services.
No, I I I don't accept that at all, sorry.
Okay, I'm just asking.
But I do, but I do take, I do take the point that you're raising, that it is a challenge. Because if you are in a in a context where you have a stagnant economy, and and particularly in the in the post COVID period, it's not specific to Barbados, inflation, high cost of living, not just here, everywhere, um unemployment levels, which are also exacerbated by COVID, to talk about bringing in people seems a bit provocative. But we're not saying bringing people under any circumstance. We're saying that if you have unmet labor needs, that you do need to find a way to fill those. So you have a managed migration policy, which is that you identify where you need, uh, like, for example, health care, sex health workers. We brought in nurses from Cuba, health professionals from Cuba and from Ghana, because we knew we had a gap there. So you bring in people to fill the gap in your in your in your labor force, and you do so very carefully. You monitor, first of all, you do need good health, uh, labor force, um, labor, labor market data. We've made recommendations on strengthening labor statistics. And you, when you bring in people, you are very care, you are following them very closely to see where are they going? Are they dislocating Barbadians? Are they causing disadvantage? But also, are they being fairly integrated in the labor force in a non exploitative way? So our recommendation is for a managed migration. We're not saying open borders.
Okay.
Okay, managed migration. And the fact is, if you have a decline in population, in particular, a decline in population of working age people, where are you getting the money to run the services? The the universal health care, the universal education? These things are connected. There's no easy solution, but you're going to have to start to think about how you deal with it. And managed migration is just one of tools. You can also use technology to maybe some of those unmet labor needs. There are different ways that you can approach that. But certainly, you also need people to take care of people. So we're saying managed migration policy should be considered. Understanding that you have carrying capacity challenges, understanding you have infrastructural challenges.
Okay. And I think this will be my final question, unless I see something else in the document. With regards, on page four, with regards to access to health care, point I, I, Roman numerals two. It says, ensure nondiscriminatory, nondiscriminatory and age appropriate access to sexual and reproductive information. I don't know about anybody reproduction, informy, reproductive information and services across the lifecycle. I don't know about anybody else here, but I have, when I, when I saw that, I thought about what was happening in the U S right now, where you have this whole comprehensive sexuality education thingy, where my child can decide, okay, he's going to school today, but instead of being a boy, as I made him, or he he got, he was born a boy, but he might decide, okay, I'm going to go to school today, and I will be taught about, boys can make babies and whatever. Um, can you speak to that in terms of age appropriate? Now, for me, a lot of the things, a lot of craziness I see happening in the U S, it is not age appropriate, because at a certain age, children, to me, need to know about science and math and English and whatever. And right now, it seems that the focus in the U S is on the different genders and the different, a whole set of madness, as I said. We're not going to go into that. But I want to know whether you can crystallize for me. You know, this abuse my mind of the notions. I'm a very visual person, so this abuse my mind of that notion that we're going down that road with regards to age appropriate access to sexual and reproductive information, please. And the nondiscriminatory part two.
No, it's okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so what we are suggesting, and this is just part of the approach to education, generally speaking, that we all need to know how our body functions and so that we can make healthy decisions about our bodies and how we interact with others. So that's the first thing. Age appropriate decisions, or good touch, bad touch. Would you disagree with that? I don't think so. Children need to know what's good touch, what is bad touch. They need to be able to have that information that they can not only receive protection from older persons around them, but that they also know what they're, that they, that their bodies are inviolate, and they can make good decisions about that. So when we talk about age appropriate um information, that's what we're talking about across the lifecycle. And also, teenagers need to understand the anatomy. Would we disagree with that? So we're just saying, continue it and strengthen it. So and also, no, you've you've already asked a question. I'm answering it now. Um, and so we have also, children have access to all kinds of information on internet, unimpeded. All kinds of information, good, bad, wrong, right. Um, and so we're saying, where you have such an explosion of information that come from many sources, many of it is a lot of misinformation, that the state has a responsibility to provide verifiable information about all of these issues for the development of young people in the country. And when we say nondiscrimination, we really do believe that, that we should not have a discriminatory policy um in any way. Gender, gender equality is gender equality, and this policy is really fundamentally rooted in gender equality, as well as fairness and nondiscrimination more generally.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, part of this process is to get information from the public, to get your comments and suggestions. Um, so we want to do that in as cordial a manner as possible. Um, we don't want you to see us as enemies or or the other way around, but we want to collaborate in terms of our coming to a good understanding of what is good for Barbados going forward. At this stage, to be fair to those who are online, I'm now going to um read out what mainly comments rather than questions from four persons. And then I'll break, get another person from the audience, and then I'll go back again to some of the online comments. So we had a comment on from Facebook, feed from our Facebook feed from Monica, and this is just a comment. Um, this is in relation to the whole question of the population size. And um, as was indicated, she is saying that um managed migration is the best option available to Barbados. Again, this is her opinion, and we would take that on board. And and of course, the remit of this particular commission is to provide a general framework. We don't provide the flesh necessarily, but um the comments we take on board. So those who are adding the flesh will probably look at these as possible options. Then Wayne is saying that what is required is jobs, improved and timely health services. Again, that is something that the policy would have mentioned, but again, we would take that on board. Monica comes back to say that income generating activities are often overlooked. And in some cases, aging populations also add to intellectual property. In other words, just indicating that the older persons, because they retire from their career, does not mean that they're useless and 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 they they know, they cannot be used. But I know in some countries, in Canada and the United States, the whole question of volunteerism, we have, and older persons assist in schools, they assist in hospitals and so. So we have to look at this question of utilizing some of our older persons, not necessarily in a full time employment way, but in terms of offering the skills. Um, she says, short term contracts can be, can aid in earning income as well from foreign countries. All countries do not practice ageism as long as you can contribute to their economy. So again, that is opinion coming in from from Monica. And continuing with her, she said, older people can can migrate and leave room for younger people too. Thus, the skills and competencies they have built up can be sold in other countries. And I know that I've heard um persons, at least one person had indicated to me, knowing that I've retired, um, and saying that some of the countries in the region are on a kind of developmental path. For example, Guyana, they're suggesting that some former civil servants can make some of their skills available, maybe to some of these countries that are seeking to develop administrative processes and so. So I will stop there, and I'll give somebody else from here in the audience a chance to make a contribution. Then I'll go back to those online. You want?
I'll just ask a question quick. I'll, I'll quick.
But no, there's something I haven't asked yet. So I'll give somebody I haven't asked a question yet a chance. So yes, the gentleman in the green chair, go right ahead.
Okay, it just so happens I was the actually involved with the pension reform way back in two thousand and two. I'm Richard Nunez. Um, so I thought I must get involved with this thing somehow. I have been away for a bit, last ten years. So a lot has happened since two thousand and two, which is when we started pension reform. In order to carry out pension reform and the national insurance, we had to do population projections, a lot of population projections. And the famous thing about it is the population pyramid. And I would like to talk about that a little bit. You showed the population pyramid, and also, it just so happens, the last two or three national insurance reviews did not show a population pyramid for reasons that are not at all clear to me. It showed it in a different format, but the pyramid is much more informative, because you can see the bottom, uh, uh, what you call it, shells coming up as time goes on. So that big, uh, what you call it? Bulge, that bulge is what we're dealing with today. That bulge has now reached um the the pensioners. And so national insurance is running into another crisis. Now, even when we did pension reform in two thousand and two, we knew that it would have to be done again. We did it with a thirty year period, but that's almost up now. We're not so far from twenty thirty two. And we have had two periods of very serious economic fallout, which has changed the assumptions considerably. But what I really wanted to do is to say, the idea that, the overarching idea, there are a lot of detail that everybody's talking about, and it's excellent stuff. I applaud Barbados, there's a lot of thinking going on. You can hear I'm a trini. We are not a lot of thinking goes on there sometimes. Um, but what I wanted to say was, the the overarching concept that you should add a hundred and eighty thousand people, because that is what would have happened if we had maintained um a fertility rate of two point one since nineteen eighty or so. I think that's that's not the way to go at all. We do not want a Barbados with five hundred thousand people in it. We already have the highest density in the Caribbean. And then somebody mentioned St. Martin. St. Martin is not an ordinary country. It's really the beach of Holland. And similarly, the other part of St. Martin, which is the French thing, they're exceptional countries. Barbados has a very high density, population density. We do not want to increase it. That bulge is up among the pensioners. All we have to do is for wait for it to go away, which it will in the next twenty years. When we did pension reform, that two thousand and two twenty years have arrived. When we did pension reform, that 2002, 20 years have arrived. In the next 20 years, that bulge will be gone. Sorry to say, you know, people don't stay alive forever. And we do not have to have a population that size. Start at, start at the lower level there. Look, we're down there, and there's no reason at all why we should not then expand very gradually. Because what you need is a population pyramid that is like a pyramid, an Egyptian pyramid, Chiopso, one of those people. Because that is stable. It will not change as long as the fertility rate remains at 2.1. So then you have to have an immigration policy. You have to change the mindset of the immigration department. You have to change the mindset of the immigration department officers. I went there once, and they said you could never become a Barbadian citizen unless you married a Barbadian. And I said, well, I tried. So the immigration policy, the mindset has to change. We want, we want people to come in, but you have to manage it, yes. Manage it very carefully. What ages are they coming in at? And it's not the immigration, senior immigration officer, or the, what is it called, commissioner, who decides that? No, it's the population committee who decides that. We're going to have, say, 500 people come in, and they must be spread as to 100 between ages 20 and 25, another 100 between 25 and 30. Each of them must be likely to have one or two children to keep up that 2.1. So it has, it has to be done, very, has to be managed very well. Even so, it's going to take years. And what you really need to do is to have somebody revise that population pyramid every two or three years. It's not enough to wait 10 years to get another pyramid. You need to have the revised population pyramid every two or three years. What's happening? You must see what's happening. Yes, you have an immigration policy, but is it working? Yes, you have a birth policy, you have more, better, what is it, care of fertility and children and so on and so on. But what effect is it having? So you have a revised pyramid every three years. The problem with the world is governments tend to change every 10 years at least. And what we need is a policy that is in place for 20 years at least. So I just wanted to say that 185,000, no. No way. No way Jose. Barbados can support the current population of about 270,000. That's very nice. Keep it that way. And you do not have to bring in 185,000 in order to have a pyramid. All you have to do is, you're going through a bulge, going to be 10 to 15 years, take care of that bulge. That's all you have to do. And then put in an immigration policy that would gradually widen out the pyramid again. I will send in a proper written thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your suggestions.
Can I say something on this? Thank you very much, and we completely agree with a lot of what you've said there. And this policy has also made recommendations around the entitlement to residence and to citizenship and the extension of categories of that to deal with exactly the issue that you identified. We do understand that there has been a draft legislation, which we've seen, which would extend, I suppose we would even say entitlement of Caribbean people to an easier pathway to residence and to citizenship than exists now. And this policy is, of course, fundamentally in tune with Caribbean regionalism, so for sure. On the replacement rate, we also take your point. We were asked to sort of suggest a figure, and it felt to us, in the absence of maybe a development plan, or in the absence of a long-term labor policy, it would be very hard to pluck a figure from the atmosphere. And so we thought, well, maybe one way to think about it is to think about replacement rate. But replacement rate, thinking about the middle, the working age population, how can you increase the working age population in this, around this question of unmet labor needs? But that you have to implement that really very carefully, and actually, just what you said there, whatever is your target and annual target, you have to review that every year. What is happening? What is the impact of those people coming in? Are they finding jobs? Where are they going? How is the environment adjusting to them? What is the carrying capacity? So I think we should probably have to make it very clear, as we do the revision, that we're not saying to bring 185,000 people into Barbados, but thinking about how you deal with that age dependency ratio, that we want to be thinking about working age people over time, over a long-term period. And, but again, very carefully mounted and adjusted, a target that has to be adjusted continuously based on information.
It's going to be a political job as well.
I would just like to follow on from what Roberto was saying. I like the approach that you took just now. Take care of the middle population, because that's a population that is rising throughout. And as you said, it is not the traditional triangle or pyramid that we are familiar with, and we would prefer, where the base, which is the young population, is the widest population. As we go up to the apex, which is the elderly population, is the smallest. That is the ideal situation because it speaks to greater provision or less stress for persons, taking care of an elderly person as well as young children, et cetera, and then the issues surrounding that. So I really do like your approach, where you say take care of the older persons, the middle population, but at the same time, be very careful of, because 185,000, we're not saying bringing in 185,000 one time. But I do take your point, and we all agree, can agree, that you do it incrementally, but be very careful so that at the end of the day, we get the shape of the pyramid that is optimal for our society, our Barbados, which is where the basis wide, where our young population is, the younger populations are the majority, and then the apex is very, very thin, which is our older population. So I do appreciate your comments on that, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a question though, the final thing. The suggestion about the population, the impacts of the population aging and the bulge in the, the desire to have, to increase the population, is it based so much on the problems with the bulge? I know, yes, the dependency ratios and so came into being, but what about the notion of having a population size, especially in the working age, working age groups, to support your development targets and to have the kind of a tax base that would be required to support that development strategy? How much did that weigh in terms of the desire to have more persons?
You have, the question of the system working as a whole, and the working population, and the economy and so on and so forth, they are all very important, but they must be within a context. And if you have a context where the population pyramid is changing and bulging and narrowing and doing things like that, you cannot have a system, cannot have policies that will last. The policies will last if the population pyramid is steady. That's what you want. Once you get a steady population pyramid, it's there forever, more or less. And you can work within that because it's, you're not going to get surprises. You're not going to get bulges, you're not going to get dense. Right? You know what, you can predict what is going to happen. As long as people keep up the 2.1, you're there. And by the way, immigration, not only you need more people, we need more people who are likely to have more children. One of the reasons that the United States is one of the few countries where the fertility rate has not fallen dramatically is because they have so many Hispanics. They have so many Hispanics. The Hispanic fertility rate is much higher than these Anglo-Saxons, if you want to call them that, or whatever you want to call them. Right? So that the overall fertility rate is still around 2.1. I think it's just like 2.2 or something. But without those Hispanics, the United States would be just like Japan, England, Barbados, Spain, everywhere, all over the world, fertility rate is falling. So it can be a problem. You have to not only have migration, but migration of people who are likely to have a high fertility rate to offset the established fertility rate you have in Barbados. That's not going to go up. With all the nice things that you do, it's 1.8 now? And you can put in all kinds of policies and might go to 1.9. France tried it. Germany tried it, they failed. You cannot get people to have more children. They'll have a little more, but it won't be substantial. And in any case, it will take 20 years before the first one.
Exactly. So that's why I am thinking that the main consideration is not necessarily just to increase the population size for increasing sake, but to have a base, to be able to support your development needs, also to have a task base, to have people contributing to the national insurance scheme. Because with all these persons going into the elderly age group, the national insurance scheme will have to be paying more and more money to more and more persons. And because of inflation, they're going to be receiving higher and higher wages, making higher and higher, maybe contributions to the national insurance, and therefore expecting a higher return. So therefore, the bulge is not, the bulge, yes, has its implications, but the, sometimes the rationale for, or the ways for addressing the bulge depends on what the government's overall objective is. And a population policy cannot stand alone. It has to work alongside a national development policy. So the national development policy has to determine what government's objectives are and targets are in terms of its development goals. And then once you know what those development goals are, we want to do this, we want to do that, we want to increase our agricultural production, we want to go into more gas exploration, do we, those kind of development goals would have to be put on the table to support the implementation of a population policy.
Well, absolutely, it has to be part of it. All I'm saying is, you have to work within that. You don't want surprises. That's the problem. Surprises is the problem. You put in a policy, and this is happening, and that is happening, and you have a school policy, and a this policy, and a that policy, and suddenly, there's either a bulge or a sink. There's nothing you can do about it. Nothing. It takes years. It takes 20 years to change that sink or that bulge. So the important thing is to have a steady population in the first place. And within that, you work on all those things, the policy initiatives. You work on improving your population, you work on improving the happiness. I mean, in the end, it's really the happiness. It's not just you want everybody to be alive, you want them to be happily alive. You work on the health and, you know, the young people, and so on and so forth. But you do all that within a framework that is stable. That is the important thing. It has to be a stable framework. Otherwise, all that you do will face a nasty surprise.
Right. So before being defensive, as Mrs. Clark would have done in her presentation, there are three major policy goals, and I think the three policy goals cover most of those things. But as I said, the most important thing is that this policy has to work alongside other policies. There has to be a development policy, has to be an education policy, have a health policy, agricultural policy. So all those have to work together, and there are a number of cross-cutting themes that are going to affect the implementation of this policy and things like that. So we hear you, and of course, we're going to be taking all of those things on board, and we're hoping that those who are going to take this policy to the next level will also be listening and hear what people are saying and some of the options that are available. Because all, everything will not work. Some things will work depending on what else is being planned.
And that is why you have to check every three years. Everything will not work. What has not worked? What has worked? What effect has, what has worked had? What effect has, what has not worked had? You have to keep checking every three years or so.
Right. And you have to be aware, for example, a person might have high blood pressure and a heart problem. You may give them medication for the high blood pressure, and it might affect the heart. So sometimes you might prescribe one thing for one, for example, you want to improve the standard and the level of education, whatever, why go into university? But F statistics show that the higher the level of a person's education, the less strident they have, you see that you're solving one problem, but you happen to exacerbate another problem that you're trying to solve. So all of those things have to be taken into consideration.
Yep. Yeah, I know. That's the important thing.
So we have.
Now, we're all standing up here. I'm standing up here, and you ladies are sitting down there. You ladies are sitting down there, and I guarantee that none of yous have got four children, have you? You got four children? What about the rest of yous? Because you're so career-minded. You're so career-minded, yeah? You are so career-minded that the nannies raise your children. You don't, hold on, hold on. So the fact is, we're not going to have any more children. Because the bottom line is, just like how yous couldn't afford them, we can't afford them either. So if you want us to, if you want more people in the population, give them a free childcare so that when they're going to work, they can take the child to the nursery for free. Then you might encourage them. Give them child allowance, because you know, you know, I know you like following the Europeans, you don't realize that you're your own country, and you can run your own country independent, you don't have to follow anyone. But because you're followers, that's why, that's why we're in this situation. We're talking about population. The gentleman just showed you the pyramid.
Thank you, sir. I think we heard that, we take your point entirely, that it's difficult to have children, and that's.
Okay, well, I'm going to stop.
We take your point.
All right, I'm going to stop. I'm going to stop. All I'm going to say is this, you can talk as much of that English rhetoric as you like. If you're not giving the people enough money to look after the children, it's not going to happen. And you can, and not only that, you've got nothing here for young people. There's nothing here for young people. I've got four children, two boys and two girls, and they'd never live in your country because it's boring. What have you got? You've got no amusement parks, no proper going out, no proper facilities for young people. So here, when the people come back here, they're like, my dad, they come here to retire. Yeah? And the money that you'll get is the pension money that comes from England, just like you get mine, because my pension comes here. Yeah? You'll get that pension money, but it doesn't matter how you increase the population, yeah? You haven't got infrastructure here for young people, so nobody ain't going to work here. Nobody ain't going to live here like that. And the rest of yous who are in the, who are studying education as women, you're not going to have no children. You were the only one who could say that you had for the rest of them, one or two or none.
So we understand the passion, but I think there are other people who want to speak. Yeah. Thank you though.
Hey, good evening. I don't know if you can hear me clearly. Yeah, my name is Emmanuel Burelia. My name. Yeah, they're going to raise it.
Nice to have you.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Emmanuel Burelia, and I wasn't here from the inception, so perhaps I would have missed some of what I may be asking or saying. Not to be redundant either, and the brother made some good points, and the elder, I think, clearly outlined his experience and expertise in the matter. I don't know why he's not sitting up there, but I don't know the expertise of anyone up there, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that in a broad spectrum, but clearly, he should be on this discussion. Nevertheless, I want to go back before I come forward. And there was a time in Barbados when the population was way more than 300,000. That's going back to the prior neo-colony state. Then that changed. And one of the things that impacted heavily on that and the marginalization of those who were enslaved and then freed was something called indentured servants by bringing primarily Indians into the East Indians into the Caribbean and places like Barbados. And what Europe did was found a very clever way of marginalizing those who had literally bled for the land and paid for it in most cases. in most cases with their life, by allowing others to come right afterwards and reap the benefits, so to speak. So although you were encouraging the, well, the importation really of other individuals into Barbados, my grandmother, Aunt Rose, bless her heart, had the same home drum, beats first. Now, I don't know the policy on how we're gonna take care of people we bring here, if we're gonna give them stipend, place to live, jobs and healthcare. And I don't know what the policy is for that. And pardon me a second, ma'am, the sister right at the end. Yeah. Yeah, my point exactly. No, my point exactly. I'm asking because I don't know what the policy is in terms of the care or how they plan to, how this whole policy plans to sustain the individuals you're bringing in. But to my knowledge, there's some folks who's about to go home soon from working on the side of the road and stuff. And a lot of folks in that capacity, which I know a lot of them, are well-qualified to work in other areas. If the issue is filling the workforce, Barbados has more than adequate amount of people to fill a workforce. Now, if it's an issue of training, well, come on, man, we live in a technological era. You know, anything could be learned from watching a couple of videos. I mean, that's just a reality. And our young people are more inclined to learn through video and audio as opposed to sitting in a classroom and listen to some individual who claim to be a teacher just there for the wages. So what I'm saying and what I'm proposing in context, let us learn from history and recognize that when we bring individuals from a different culture, a different background into our country, what it will do, especially if we're gonna plug them directly into a system existing and give them the resources they need to sustain and grow themselves, their family wealth for generations to come, what that does, it impacts negatively on those who are already here, who have been here for generations, who have already been impacted over the years. Why don't we rescue our people first? Why don't we rescue our people first? And if there's room afterwards, then let's fill the gap. But to ignore our people and to sit there and think that having this dialogue and speaking from an eloquent intellectual perspective based on information that was most likely handed down, because the chart said 2010, it doesn't have nothing for 2011, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, all up to 2040, I think was the projection, where is the one for 2015, 2020, 2025, even 2030? I'm assuming again that you might have that because I came late. In the event that you don't have that data, how can you make an informed decision as to where we should and ought to go? It's like the order to general. How are you gonna audit the country when the country and being audit in how long? Well, I mean, I'm just saying. How we really know we're missing? So all I'm saying is to say this. I don't know all the details about the plan. I do know that the prime servant said that there was plan to mass migration and stuff like that. And yes, this is something that was discussed for quite some time. And I'm sure that everyone sitting on this panel, most of you anyway, is probably very serious about implementing this for whatever reason. I'm saying, let us fix Barbados. Right now, the world is at a precipice point where everything is changing. Let us fix Barbados. We got plenty of young people on the blocks. And as far as population density, he's correct. I think Barbados will be third or the fourth in the world based on demographics. But guess what? You took a drive in the country recently, but there's enough land in Barbados though. Growing mermar, morracy and monkeys. I mean, there's enough, enough land. So we don't have to be that densely populated, you know, it's just that they squeeze the people together in these impoverished communities. So all I'm gonna say in closing is that whatever the reasons are for bringing in over 100,000 people outside of a political move, that's what it looks like from a standpoint of strategy. In a war, the people in the Pentagon always see things different from the soldiers on the ground. And as a soldier on the ground, I'm telling you, if we don't heal and save our people first, what y'all are invariably doing is creating a problem that's gonna spill over. It's gonna spill over. But this is 2023, and history has already taught us how this is gonna unfold. So just factor in the idea of indentured service. And by the way, that wasn't the point at the East Indians by any means, but just how Europe undermined the Caribbean and our Caribbean leaders by putting these policies in place, just like the education system that you spoke about earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So just some points of information, because you may find it useful. This is the population situation analysis, and you will get a lot of the data that you're questioning in here. And when else that is available online? Okay, so there's a whole analysis which includes a lot of detailed data, not only on the population, on birth rate, death rate, migration, and also projections. You couldn't get printed? Why not? Anyways, but it's available.
To respond to what you said, I appreciate that you actually have some data.
Let me finish though. So that's maybe one thing that you can look at, and it'd be useful for you to look at it and then give us some reflection on it, because we are still really very much open to your perspectives and anyone's perspectives that could, if you think we need to correct some things, we're really very much open to that. On the taking care of Barbadians, we fully agree with you. Those people who are here now really are the priority. And how do we do that? For the Asian population, how do we have wellness in Asian? How do we address unemployment among youth or underemployment among youths? This is a big part of this policy. It's not either or, it's alongside. But there's no getting away from the fact that the government needs revenue to do a lot of these things. And I suppose you can get revenue from investments, from stimulating your economy, from stimulating agriculture. There are many ways in which a government raises revenue. One of the ways it does that is through income tax and value-added tax. Now, if you have a decline in working age population and you're still, as we are all across the Caribbean, quite dependent on income tax, what does that mean about government revenue? So we're not, we're saying one of the things that the government can consider, and by the way, this is an independent commission, this is not partisan. One of the things that the government has to consider alongside really fixing the unemployment problem, particularly amongst youths, is also a managed migration policy in the sectors where we need expertise. That's why it's managed. It's not an open-door policy. And it has to be closely monitored. So I really hope that, and the policy itself is not, this is a three-pager. I really do hope that you get a chance to sit down with it and even where you disagree with it, that you also send in your comments. That's the purpose of the consultation.
Oh, so there is indeed a plan to, like you said, you're looking to bring in people that have expertise in particular fields. And I do appreciate the fact that we're entering a whole digital time now. And we have marginalized our young people by still teaching them a colonial system that creates servants instead of people who have the expertise. I get it. But that's a problem that the same government who's looking to fix this created. So all I'm saying is that I don't feel that it is in all fairness to Barbadians and this Trojan of Barbados, especially the Trojan, because those are the same ones who are gonna inherit all the bills, all the debts and everything that we are gonna put on their backs by trying to get all these resources that you're referring to, probably through the same IMF in the future. And in all fairness, it would mean that the sister mentioned, if we do not work this platform, and I'm saying we inclusive, because we are one people. I don't do politics, I do people. If we are intended to resolve this, like y'all are sitting there with straight faces, most of you sincerely serious, then education has to be involved in this. Healthcare has to be involved in this conversation. I mean, there's every aspect that has to be involved.
We so agree with you.
Okay, so one more thing.
Have a look at the policy.
To even sit here, and I guess you're doing most of the speaking, so I guess you have a leadership position. I'm gonna say this to you directly. If you are not getting the assistance you need to make this actually work, if you are sincere about it, then resign and let your resignation speak volumes of, I'm not gonna be facilitated doing nothing. Are we not serious? One second, just one second. I appreciate you. All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, if you are serious about it and you're sitting behind closed doors that we don't have the information because there's no transparency here in Barbados, that's not you. And you realize that, listen, man, I'm being, they're blowing smoke, you know, they, you know, then by your actions, it speaks volumes. Why be facilitated? Because in the long run, is your name is gonna go on this, man?
Look, I have to interject here. Now, first of all, this commission's mandate does not include implementing anything. This is, they're just making recommendations based on their expertise and so. Other arms, the government is the agency that will have to implement this policy. That's the first thing. The second Yes.
No, 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 this is not a consultancy.
It's a commission to make recommendations.
We all volunteered our time and our experience because we love Barbados just as much as you. And we want to do something for our country, to help our country in terms of having the resources and so on. So we volunteered our time and our expertise to come and put this together. This now is a recommendation that goes to the Cabinet of Barbados. They could accept.
Where's your office located? So we can have other volunteers who are here who are watching to come be a part of this.
They could accept, they could reject this wholesale, they could take parts of it. This is, they can do that entirely.
Okay, I see your point.
But we've made recommendations.
I follow you.
Right. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Another word, this is just a show.
No, no, it's not just a show.
Why not?
This is for government now to go forward, and they make a decision on what they implement, what they take forward in order to achieve the objectives. So just to clarify that.
Okay, we have some comments coming in from the, from the audience. And we invited the online audience to make comments as well, so I'm going to entertain some of their comments as well. We have Marilyn who sent in a suggestion on YouTube. I'm interested to know whether the younger population stay on the island after graduation or whether they do what my parents did and travel abroad. Again, I suppose that addresses the whole question of brain drain. Someone from G I S, sorry, sorry about that. Marilyn, again, continuing, appears from here across the pond in UK, so the person must be writing, but according from the UK, the remote working passport welcome stamp program, which Barbados pioneered, was successful. Is this a possible strategy for bringing Barbadians with talents back to the island? Okay, a question, another question from Facebook. The whole question of a 24-hour society, that's something that was considered. The whole healthcare services and so being on a 24-hour basis and other things. If we want to have a 24-hour society, then obviously certain other things will have to be put in place, the transportation system will have to be looked at and all those kind of things, more daycare services and whatever. We also have something from Sophia. This whole thing about 185,000 persons. Now, I think Mrs. Clark was trying to make it clear that government did not say that they want 185,000 persons. Now, they're gonna have a mass migration to bring in 185. That's not the idea. If you see something like that there, as she said, 185,000 is simply the deficit between what would be, what, other things being equal, what would have been the population now if Barbados had maintained replacement level fertility. But there's no, I don't know, you'll find a document that says that government wants to increase the population by 185,000. So I wanted to just get that clear, right? So then we have Wayne from Facebook, what are the overall objectives? Then Yvette also from YouTube, the government ended working from home for the public service on January the first, 2023. The policy says that you want to encourage more flexible work arrangements, but then the government has taken away that option. So those are some of the things that are coming in from online. Do any of the commissioners want to comment on any of those things?
When the gentleman here was speaking, the lady on the end said that they needed to use the money that they get, yeah? To put it in the right place, yeah? And have the right expertise. Now, I saw the expertise out here. I saw them put down the road surface on the smoothest road in Barbados. Not only that, they went on to light that road and put reflectors on the most lit road in Barbados. Now, tell me that in a waste of public's money? Because, hold on, hold on, no.
Okay, but no, I'm just, I'm just cautioning you that you're going outside of the mandate of this thing.
We was talking about spending and how you would spend the money to bring in your Barbadian, your Barbados population policy.
But as I said
I'm saying, I'm saying that when the money comes in with all of your expertise, because you say that you're experts, you say that you went to school, let me show you what an expert you are. How can you be an expert and put every 200 yards taxpayers' money in a white arrow on the ABC highway? Hold on, don't let me, hold on. Why are you gonna take taxpayers' money to put cat-sized, not cat, reflectors on the most lit road? So what you're doing, you're getting the money, but you're not directing the money in the right place? And then you're gonna say that you're experts? How can you be an expert? When you go to, when you look at your zebra crossing, you've got the zebra crossing sign right on the zebra crossing, not even realizing the driver needs to see the cross, the sign when he's approaching it? So how can you be such expert when just that even your common roads look like amateurs put it together and you're talking about bringing expertise? You're kidding yourselves, trust me. You're kidding yourselves.
Thank you, but as I pointed out
In no form, no shape or form, basically, all you've done is you've mimicked the English, the way how you speak, the way how you act. That's why you chastise
And the point you were making is then, a very precise suggestion or question based on all of what you've said just now?
Well, look, look, look.
Precise, precise.
What I'm saying is this. You're talking about spending the money in a good fashion. That's what you're saying. And I'm telling you, the money can't be spent right when you put reflectors on the most lit road in the country. Do you understand what I'm saying to you? That same money could be put to family allowance. That way, the woman, she don't mind getting pregnant because she could use that same money that you're putting cat's eyes on the most lit road on the island. Now, when, listen, I have a tour operator's business and the people that I represent actually have a customer base of 2.7 million English people. And when I take them around the island and they see zebra crossings on a roundabout, they see the most lit road with reflectors on. Do you know how we look? You could talk as much English as you want, you can sound as elocution as you want.
All right, sir.
But when people come here and look at what you've done for people who are experts, you look like novices, trust me.
Sir, thank you very much. All right, but as I'm seeking to maintain that, this, okay, just, just listen to me, just listen to me. I'm just, my role is to moderate the flow of comments and questions. And as I indicated, we hear you, but your things might be directed to the wrong audience because this commission has a limited mandate to prepare this policy. And then the policymakers would implement it as they see fit. So that's the point I make. Okay, thank you very, no, no, sorry, sorry. I can't, we can't, no more, we can't have anymore because we, first of all, we're at our limit.
I keep hearing your policies and your policies are always wrong. You had a mandate vaccine policy, which was wrong. Now you're coming with another policy and you expect us to accept what you're saying when you've been wrong on all the other policies?
All right, thank you very much.
You're talking about the education. Our 10-year-olds, we had to walk the other day through town because you want to teach our 10-year-old sexual education at 10 and 11 years old?
So you see what the problem, you're drifting into areas that are outside the mandate of this commission. So we can't entertain you anymore. Let me just say that.
It's all linked because it's all
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I think we have, we have come to the end of our consultation for the evening and hence to the end of our consultations on
I think that there's someone online who did ask a question about young people leaving the island.
So you're responding to
Yeah, I don't think we answered the person.
Go ahead.
The person's interested to know whether the younger population stay on the island after graduation or whether they do what my parents did and travel abroad.
Right.
I think that that was a question. I think certainly that we are all concerned about brain drain. Even understanding that young people will travel, they will Even understanding that young people will travel, they will go to seek opportunities elsewhere. We heard a lot about that yesterday in the consultation in, um, was it in Princess Margaret? I forget. I think it's Princess Margaret, not Alexandra's. There, you know, there is a challenge in maintaining, retaining young people here, they, they need, they look, they're looking for economic opportunities. If there are not opportunities at all levels in the labor market, they will migrate, so. Uh, migration is really part of the Caribbean experience pre-independence and post-independence, though we are seeing the reduction in migration as the borders close down elsewhere, or at least tighten up elsewhere. But the, 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 the commission is asking for some serious consideration about how we can retain young people here and also bring back young people who have migrated. But we understand that that, of course, is that what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Because people, young people will stay here and will come back here if there are economic opportunities for them. So you do need a kind of a vibrancy in the economy, um, which is connected to a, a national development plan. But we also made some recommendations, again, on the education reform, um, that responds to and values the diversity of capacities. Now, that came up a lot in doing the situational analysis, that we have an education system that is still undervaluing, um, uh, well, overvaluing academia as against other whole range of, of skills that the society needs. So how do we have an education sector that values diversities of capacities which we all need? So I think, again, education reform is a kind of a cross-cutting, uh, theme in this, um, uh, policy document. We also talk about, uh, ensuring that young people have accessible and affordable, well, affordable access to productive assets, including land, so that, you know, they, they can seek and they can be involved in agriculture, or they can be involved in, in other things that you, you need land for. Of course, we need improved delivery of public services to support private sector development and entrepreneurship, ease of doing business and so on. Um, and also some tax concessions for young people to stay here to be involved in, uh, in private sector or even in, you know, starting families and maintaining families. So we recognize that retaining, um, retaining young people in, in, is part of the challenge that we have and the, the, uh, policy makes some recommendations on that. So I wanna thank the person for asking that question online.
That's you then, Ms. Clark, I want to wrap up.
Okay. I'd just like to say briefly that we need to start by reading the document, right? I, I have heard a lot of opinions expressed this evening, which have absolutely nothing to do with our mandate, right? We, we have been asked to prepare a document responding to a specific request, and that has been done, right? The important thing is that for us to move forward with the position that, but from the position that Barbados is in at this stage, clearly, we have to look constructively at a migration policy. It, it, it must be an exercise that is devoid of emotional approaches. We need to look at the facts, and the facts should dictate the direction that we take, right? We are not here, uh, to represent political positions because, as far as I'm aware, none of us are politicians, right? We have a specific request, and we respond to that. The information which has been garnered by us over a long time, because I believe the committee has been in existence now for a very long time, we've had numerous discussions at various levels, and the direction which has been suggested is that in terms of rectifying the problems which we face, that a managed migration policy will offer some relief in the short term, and in the long term, we need to look at the whole policy of, uh, reproduction, reproductive rights and so on. And that is what it is in a nutshell, you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming, and, um, you're still free to write to the ministry, um, anything you wanna write. Um, this doesn't have to be the end of the consultative process. If you are expert in any area that you heard being discussed this evening, you can write to the ministry and give your views. So thank you very much and get home safely. Thanks a million to, um, the media, um, let me see if I have here. Yeah, we want to thank those who facilitated these consultations over the last three days, and, and there would be the G, um, the people from the GIS, and then the other persons involved with the audio, visual, or the visual parts of the thing, making sure that the persons online were able to contribute as well. We also want to thank the schools who made their, their, um, facilities available to us, the, the, the board and management of the Alexandra School, the Princess Margaret School, and the St. Michael's School. And as I said, the theme of persons from the Barbados Government Information Service, Mr. Maxi Valdeo and the other individuals responsible for the live streaming, and also those persons from the Ministry of Economic Affairs led by the Permanent Secretary, Ms. Annette, um, Weeks, and any others that popped in during the, the, the three days that we had, and particularly uh, Ms. Vanel Savory, who, um, was doing most of the legwork and the desk work relating to this policy. So thank you very much, and as I said, get home safely.